Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this April 28, 2020, virtual meeting of the Burn Leo County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to call this meeting to order now. It is about 5:06, so meetings coming to order. As always, we will start with a silent invocation to recognize our first responders, healthcare workers, and all of those out on the front lines taking care of us every day, as well as our pledge of allegiance, which tonight will be led by Chief Perez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I would like now to talk about the announcements. Any changes to the agenda, Madam County Manager? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, we've got three changes. The first one is Item 6A, under Behavioral Health, the senior case management be removed from consent and will be heard as Item 9A, under approvals. The second is item 6H, the purchase of the Bearcat to be removed from consent and will be heard as Item 9B, as in void, under approvals. And the last is, under Item 3A, County Clerk, amending the 2020 primary election and presidential primary election polling locations added to the consent agenda as Item 6L. And on this one, a vote is required to change this agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Madam County Manager. I would move to allow Item 3A to be moved to consent agenda as Item 6I. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Colley. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Colley?
Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
So called, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, County Manager Julie Baca. Appreciate that. We'll now move on to Item 4, Public Comment and Communications. I know that we had, I think, one public comment come in, Julianne, is that correct, from Dr. Bill Weiss?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Dr. Weiss and I talked earlier this week. He said he would send in a comment related to one of the items on the consent agenda, which is related to the Addiction Treatment Committee that is still going to be in happening. Sorry, losing my train of thought. It's still going to be in effect. So that's what his public comment was about. Number five, we now have board and committee appointments. This is a motion to nominate and approve two at-large appointments to the UNMH Board of Trustees appointments. These are on my agenda here as 1, 2, and 3, so we will follow it that way. Two from Commissioner Colley, one from Commissioner Casada. As with all of our votes, we will have the Commissioner bring it forward. There'll be a first and a second and a vote. The first two to get a majority votes will be on the UNMH Board of Trustees. So we'll start with number one, Trey Hammond, representing that large UNMH Board of Trustees. Commissioner Colley.
Commissioner Colley nominates Trey Hammond. Do you want me to talk about it or just smile?
Smile is fine, and you could... So Commissioner Colley recommends Trey Hammond. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. First and a second. All in favor for Trey Hammond, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Hammond is the first at-large member to the UNMH Board of Trustees. Okay. Commissioner Colley?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to nominate Michael Wartell to the second remaining seat on the Hospital Board of Trustees. You all have read his resume. He's a very skilled person.
There's a first by Commissioner Colley. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner O'Malley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that one goes down 2 to 3. Okay. And then finally, number 3, Michael Brasher, representing that large UNMH Board of Trustees, sponsored by Commissioner Casada. Would you like to make a motion?
No, because you already filled the two positions.
No, no. The second, the second one did not pass.
Oh, the second one didn't pass, okay.
No, sir.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Michael Brasher at large. Everybody read his resume and extensive work that he's done in the community.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, that passes on a 4 to 1. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, do you want to do a roll call on that, since one fails, so you'll have it?
It looks like Counselor Martinez is saying yes. So should we do all three again on a roll call or just the two?
I think it'd be best if you did all three on a roll call, just that way the record's clear.
Okay, that's fine. So we had a 5-0, a 2-3, and a 4-1, so we'll start back at the top. Trey Hammond, representing that large. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colley?
Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. Unanimous 5-0. Next is Michael Wartell.
All right. Commissioner Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
No.
Commissioner, Chairman Talbot?
No.
So called, sir.
Thank you. That one fails 2 to 3. And then finally, Michael Brasher?
Commissioner Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
Okay, that's a 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Kenny, as well, for reminding us of that. And I truly do appreciate everyone's patience with this as we work through it, even though Julianne gives me this amazing script. It's like, you know, right there in front of you, like, okay, I gotta do that. All right, so we do. So thank you all. Okay, so now we're on to number 6, approval of the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda as changed. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Commissioner Colley, thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, could I get resolution numbers for Items 6B, 6C, 6J, and 6L, and then we'll do a vote? You're on mute. You're on mute.
All righty. And don't forget that we've moved the county clerk's position. It'll be...
Oh, yes, ma'am. And 6I, thank you.
Okay. So 6B, resolution number 1, FR 2020-43. Number 2, resolution 2, FR 2020-44. Resolution number 3, number 3, FR 2020-45. C2 is AR 2020-46. Am I doing, is it I or L for the county clerk? I understand, it looks to me like it would be L under the consent agreement.
Madam Clerk, it is L.
I'm sorry for that. Thank you, Julianne. Sorry about that.
All right, so J is AR 2020-47. And L, which was added, 2020-48.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, so much. And thank you, Julianne. Sorry about that.
Yes, Julianne, thank you.
I was reading that incorrectly. So we have a first and a second on the consent agenda, and we have our numbers we need. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
So called, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now we are on to number 7, Adoption of Ordinance Amendment to County Code. Planning and Development Services, Nuisance Abatement Ordinance. Enrico Grati to present. Mr. Grati?
Chairman Talbot, members of the Board of County Commissioners, good afternoon, late afternoon. So this is an ordinance that we've been working on for some time, and it essentially gives us the tools we need to abate nuisance properties within the unincorporated Burn Leo County without having to take these cases, as we've been doing previously, to state district court to ask a judge to allow us on the property and board a property up, clean a property up, or in some cases, raise a nuisance property. So this gives us a set of tools and a framework that'll allow the county to be much more efficient and effective in responding to nuisance properties throughout the county.
Awesome. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Grati. Any questions regarding this particular abatement ordinance?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Casada, Commissioner Casada?
Mr. Chair, you know, this is something that has been really hard for us to address, some of the issues we have in the South Valley. And so I appreciate that, you know, we're going to be able to do this in a more expedited way. You know, I've been, I've been the Commissioner three and a half years, and we've been working on properties since the day I was started. And it's just because of this, you know, these, this ordinance and the way it was in place before really kept us from being able to really fix up and change the directions of a lot of these neighborhoods. And I just want people to know, this isn't about gentification. This is about, this is about really, you know, bringing up the value of homes, where these homes have been there for years. Me and Mr. Grati have been looking at this one building that's been burnt there for how many years? I can't even tell you how many years it's been sitting on a block, just burnt, and, and nobody's doing anything. And this is, we haven't been able to really do anything to help the people who live around this, this thing. It's attracting people for, they're breaking in, they're starting more fires, they're doing drugs. It's just become a drug house, and there's no reason for us to be able to be doing this. We need to be able to do this in a quicker and more efficient manner. So I'd like to thank Enrico Grati for, for doing his work and making this a lot more smoother and quicker for us to do our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada, and thank you, Mr. Grati. Appreciate that. Yeah, these are always things we probably, unless we're living around it like you are at times, and us, we see it when we're out in the community, forget about. So thank you for taking this action. That's great. So, yes, Commissioner Colley?
I want to say that I think this is an unusual piece of legislation, because it says throughout that the purpose of, of our staff, in fact, the purpose of, of this legislation is to help a homeowner or someone in charge of the property to do their job. There are several places in here where it's clear that, that we could move in and say, this is a terrible place, and it's been reported numerous times, and we've given you numerous notices, so we're just going to do this. Rather, the approach that's stipulated in this legislation is that it says to, to help the, the person do what they need to do best and to encourage them to do that, that, that taking the stiff arm of, of the law and moving in is the last option, not the first option here. And it's very clear throughout this document that it says it that way over and over and over again, and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for that, for those comments. So with that, Commissioner Casada, would you like to make a motion to move this forward?
You're on mute.
Sorry, you're on mute, Commissioner Casada. You're on mute.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Move for approval.
I'll second that. Okay, we got seconds, all right. Myself for Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor of moving this forward, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll. Thank you, Enrico.
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley? Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
So called, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. All right. On to adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, can you please give me a resolution numbers for Items 8A and 8B?
Yes, sir. 8A is FR 2020-49. 8B is FR 2020-50.
Thank you, ma'am. Budget cares grant. Deputy County Manager Reagan?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. As you know, we received $31.8 million from the federal government to use in combating expenses, countering expenses that we've incurred because of the COVID virus. The expenses cannot be in our most recent budget, and they have to cover the period between March 1st and December 30th. The county received its allocation on Friday of last week, so we are here to ask for approval to accept the coronavirus, coronavirus aid relief and economic securities grant in the amount of $31,818,045.20, and also to authorize a county manager to execute a grant agreement or any subsequent amendments related to the Corona, coronavirus aid relief and economic securities act. I stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Shirley. Appreciate that, and it's great to see that some of this money is trickling down locally as we've seen, you know, with Richard, Richard Clark and Greg Chief and Julie and everybody working so hard. I'm sure I'm missing Margarita with mental health, Lisa with procurement, everybody working really hard to make sure that we are protecting those most vulnerable. I'm glad to see, I mean, $31 million is a good chunk of change, and it's good to see that it's... So we, have we already seen the wire into our account, or are the funds there to be spent?
Yes, Commissioner, the, the money came in on Friday, and I've been sitting in on various meetings with the US Department of Treasury, and the money is ours to spend. We don't have to seek reimbursement. They will come in sometime, starting next January of 2021, and do an audit with the Inspector General. So we just have to keep good records. So we're in the process of documenting how we're going to spend the money, capturing all of the data, working very closely with, as you said, the county manager, the Richard Clark, Greg Pettis, and all of the team to make sure that we have the appropriate expenditures based on the guidance that they've provided. They said today that they were going to be sending out more guidance on Friday to get a little more specific about what is and what isn't covered. So there's been good information out there. So I think that the county, I don't know that we'll use it all. We have to return what we don't use at the end of the December 30th, but we are going to be evaluating all of our expenditures and looking to see what meets the, the requirements for, for the distribution of the funds.
Great. Thank you so much. Julie?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to say, to thank Senator Udall and Senator Heinrich and Congresswoman Howland for their efforts. They provided a significant amount of guidance to help us secure the funding. And just particularly, I also want to thank Shirley, Shirley Reagan and Clay Campbell and our federal lobbyists. So, you know, without them, you know, we wouldn't have been able to secure the money as quickly as we did, and it went directly to the county. So just wanted to acknowledge their efforts.
Thank you, Julie. Yeah, that's, that's great to see. I want to just make one other quick comment about the budget. Some of you may have seen the, the editorial that was in the Journal over the weekend talking about our budget. And, you know, I supported it from the get-go. All of us supported it. You know, they were questioning, well, how could you approve a budget when you don't know what's going to happen, and why wouldn't you start slashing, I think is what they wanted? And, and my comment was, after talking to Shirley and understanding it a little deeper, is, you know, right now, our budget honestly hasn't been impacted yet. We have not seen the full impact of what's going to happen. Now, what I have seen is our team of deputy county managers and staff who are prepared in the event we need to do something, in the event that we need to take action. And we'll take swift action, which we've watched this team do before. When we had the challenges with the $17 million from the Treasury Group, we quickly acted, and the employees quickly made choices and decisions, and we stopped one-time expenditures, and we sort of deferred maintenance on things, and we hope to not have to do those things. But if push comes to shove, and we get in those positions, and we don't see the gross receipts tax, and we don't see the property taxes, then we will. Right now, just so everyone knows, at least I, if I read correctly, 90% of homeowners in New Mexico, in Burn Leo County, they escrow their property taxes. What does that mean? That means their mortgage company has been taking out their property taxes with their payments. So even though they may be deferring their payments now for the next 90, most of that money has already been withdrawn that they paid, that will pay their May property taxes. So not all of it, but most of it. So I think we'll have a better picture come June, and we'll be ready to move. So anyway, thanks to the commission for supporting that. And I, I think it's always important that when we make a decision and they challenge us, that we have the facts to back it up. Commissioner Colley?
Mr. Chair, if you would write that in a letter to the local newspaper, I would be happy to sign off on that with you.
Well, I think we should. I mean, again, I understand their position. You know, they, they want to lump us in with the city, and we are separate and we do work together. But by the same token, I believe what Shirley and her team has done, at least in the last eight years that I've been working with her, is nothing short of a miracle considering some of the economic challenges we've had. So I think we should talk, Commissioner Colley, and we can do that. Thank you for that support. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept FR 2020-49, as well as authorize County Manager Julie Baca to execute subsequent grant agreements related to the CARES Act for $31,818,045.20, and then obviously the additional amendments that may come around. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous decision. Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Mr. Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbot?
Aye.
Thank you. So called.
Good job, team. Way to go. Number B, this is economic development. All right, Mei Ling with the Burn Leo County seal behind her, ready to roll with some... We need some economic development these times. So talk to me, this is technical assistance for small business support. We got three different items here. Would you please go through them, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So economic development recommends the approval of the financial resolution appropriating the budget and the amount of $500,000 from general fund to provide economic development programming. Also, we recommend that you authorize the county manager to, to approve and sign and execute the multi-award, possibly multi-award, multi-two-year service agreements, also to authorize the county manager to approve all future amendments. I'll stand for questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mei Ling. I do want to say that I commend Commissioner O'Malley. She immediately, when she started to see some of these COVID-19 sort of cracks starting to occur, she mentioned that, you know, we should try to come up with some money to try and help. I jumped on board with that immediately and said, that's a great idea, let's do our part. Half a million dollars, sounds like a lot. On the other hand, depending on how many small businesses, we will do all we can. And I commend her for thinking about that. I think it's, it's just good government to try to help small businesses right now continue to move forward and/or get back on their feet. So Commissioner O'Malley, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know that there's been other programs. The city had a program, I think they, they may have expanded it for small business and grants. I, you know, talking with folks who are on the front lines, who support small businesses, work with them on their budgets, on their marketing, on, on their structure, felt strongly that it would be important that they work closely with these businesses who, who are, were impacted by this during this difficult time. And in some cases, maybe look at helping them pivot a little bit, look at, take advantage of some new maybe technology that they hadn't thought of before, things like that, to help them get past this. So, and, and I think that that's best left sometimes to the, to people who, who have the expertise in that area. Also, I think that this gives us an opportunity with this new money that's coming down from the federal government to look at the possibility of having a, a grant, well, I would call it a, I think it's not, it's not called a free, but a little loan program, it's called a guaranteed program, a guaranteed loan program for small businesses. And there could be, you know, substantial amount set aside for that, that these nonprofits could access as a result of working with, with businesses and to identify that. So anyway, I want to also thank Mei Ling and her, and also Marcos for putting together this, it looks like there's going to be an RFP that, I don't know if it's gone out or not, but...
It has.
So we could have a quick turnaround with this.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Piscotti?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to hear a little bit more. Commissioner O'Malley, you brought up the loan program. Is, is this a part of the loan program, or this is just for technical help, training, resources to help small businesses, like you said, pivot, kind of expand during this time? Commissioner O'Malley or Mei Ling?
Commissioner, did you want me to answer?
Well, you can answer.
So, so this RFP is specific to business assistance. Now that we've gotten some, a little bit more detail, not a lot of detail with the CARES money from the federal government, Shirley and myself and Pam are looking into what it would look, how we, what type of policies we'd need to put in place and how we would administer a grant loan guarantee program. So this is completely separate from what the CARES grant is, is kind, is putting on the table. But at this time, this gives us immediate assistance to small businesses and, and a resource for them that we just internally don't have the staff and the ability to do at this time. And, and like Commissioner O'Malley said, there are smarter people than us that do this every day. So, so let's, let's help facilitate that, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Piscotti.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so it's for contracting with a consultant or somebody not specifically giving the money to small businesses, but contracting with a sort of a vendor to provide training services, it sounds like?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Casada?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my, this has been very distracting here at home. It's really hard to get my work done here at home. This is, this whole new way of doing things is not how I usually do business, so I'm trying to adapt. But, you know, I have some questions on the CARES Act, the $31 million, Mei Ling, is that, is that just what the county got? Or is that, are we sharing that with the city? Okay, so I have concerns. I have concerns about businesses that are in the unincorporated area of Burnaleo County. Are we going to carve that $31,000 for just the people in the unincorporated area, since the people who live within the city limits are going to get help from the city? The same thing with this $500,000. Is this only going to be put towards businesses that are in the unincorporated area? I have major concerns about that, because if you have businesses that are double-dipping that are in the city and in the county, and then I have businesses in the unincorporated area that are, and so does Commissioner Piscotti, that doesn't have, that they're not tapping into these resources. You know, when the city came out with the $700,000 relief for small businesses, you know, as you know, none of it went to any part of the unincorporated area, understandably so, because the city takes care of the city and we take care of the county. So I'm going to want to know specifically, Julie, how you spend this money and where the money is going? I think that I'm going to spend some time writing some amendments, hopefully that we can get through, that we're really concentrating on the businesses that do not get help from the city, the city of Albuquerque. Because, as you know, when the mayor put that money out, we got none of that. And so a lot of the business in my community, although I do agree with how we're looking at redevelopment programming, that doesn't help the tailor, that doesn't help the barber, that's not helping the people who really need the help right now, who can't work, who rely on people coming into their business every day to put out services. You know, those are the major amounts of businesses that are in my district. You know, restaurants, for the most part, have adjusted and are doing okay, not all of them, but some of them are, right? They're be able to serve food through the drive-through, they're doing curbside service. There's so many businesses that even if you put them online, or if you taught them how to do a website, if you taught them to do these sorts of things, that's really not going to help the businesses in the way that we, I think, should be helping businesses. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that that's a major concern for me. I'm sure it's a major concern for Commissioner Piscotti and for other commissioners who may have elements of their district that are strictly county. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at that in a big way.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Casada, just to preempt kind of what you're talking about, and part of the county's recovery plan, what the economic development team has done is pulled a list of the businesses that are, have business licenses with the county that are located within the county. So we've already preempted this concern. And so we are actually calling on each of these businesses, we split up this list between the five of us on my team, and are calling on these businesses and interviewing them on what their concerns are and what's going on. And in some cases, and in a lot of cases, unfortunately, they're reaching out to us because nobody else is talking to them. So we understand the concerns specific to the South Valley and the East Mountains because they didn't qualify for that program, and there was a lot of discontent that was as a result of that. And so we are, we are trying to do a personal outreach to the unincorporated area, understanding that they're not getting the same attention as some of the city businesses. I will say that in the past, when we have done an RFP for economic development programming, we have made sure it was specific in the contract that a percentage of who they assisted had to be unincorporated businesses. So there was no, I appreciate your concern and what you're saying, but don't think for one second that isn't ours as well. And we are, we have preempted that, and it was a concern when Commissioner De La Cruz was on the commission, and we know, and also with Commissioner Piscotti's area. And so we reach out to them personally, and which they appreciate, because nobody else has. So we're looking at that. But I just want to make sure that this RFP is not part of the CARES Act. I just want to be clear for the public, just only because it's a public meeting, that this is not CARES Act money, that we are looking at that separately, and that will be a separate type of programming that we establish in what we do. And we will bring that forward to the commission, also understanding the concerns that this RFP is bringing forward. But I feel like this RFP is really trying to assist businesses in more of a collaborative way, as opposed to a band-aid. So that, I would just, I would just put that forward to the commission.
Oh, Mr. Chair, a quick follow-up. Thank you, Mei Ling, that makes me feel a whole lot better. And I do understand that we need to teach a person to fish, and I understand that we're working on it right now, and we're not on, I may, we passed that, but, you know, like I said, I'm just, I'm all over the place trying to, you know, focus here. It's just really hard for me to do it in the same space for four weeks.
I understand.
So it helps when I go to the office and meet with staff, and, you know, all those things that I normally do, I haven't been really doing at the level that I'm normally doing it. So I appreciate you explaining 8A for the people out there, and really showing the concern for that. That makes me feel a lot better, and I am 100% support it. And look, you know, I think if they have a business license with Burnaleo County, and they may be in the city limits, based on that, that's okay with me, that's who we're supposed to help. And I appreciate that we want to, you know, I think some businesses will be able to upgrade how they do business based on this funding and based on that. So I just want to know who we're working with on that. I know that we, as at Burnaleo County Economic Development, is suited to do this type of work, because we have a wider range of scope, what economic development does, to a specific way of how you run the office. This kind of really isn't part of that. So I'd like to just know what businesses or what organizations we are working with will be going in the community to do this type of work to help businesses, you know, upgrade, I guess, for lack of better word.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you. So I think the point was not to be exclusive of businesses who, you know, the small businesses, those that are, it's not, was it so much area, to be honest with you, because Burnaleo County is pretty big. But the idea was to give the opportunity to businesses all over the county that would not be able to access some of these funds. And it's been very difficult for them to apply for things, so they, there's resources out there, but it's been difficult for them to apply. So, and then we have people, of course, who live in unincorporated areas that have businesses within the city. So it's an interesting mix. But I think what's important, too, is that when we look at things that are county-wide, the fact is that we're all paying county taxes. And then the people in the city are paying city taxes on top of that. So, you know, not to exclude folks, I think, who really need help, whether they're in the city or the unincorporated areas, I think that's going to be really important. And then I think if we can work on percentages, or, you know, I don't know, size of businesses or things like that, I guess that could come as part of the discussions later in terms of contracts and things like that. But I think, I think the intent is definitely that we've got folks out there who are struggling, they need help, let's see how, if we can get them help as soon as possible. Thank you.
Shirley, do you want to speak at all about, and then Mei Ling, CARES and CARES Act money?
Yes, I just wanted to add some clarity around the CARES Act money. Yes, Commissioner Casada, the $31.8 million is entirely the county's money. The U.S. Department of Treasury last Friday issued some general guidelines on qualifying expenditures. We are evaluating those. So it's basically money in the bank for us to cover the expenses that we have incurred because of the COVID. And so what we are doing is evaluating all of those, so like overtime and different expenditures. On the call today, they kind of expanded on some of the things that we can address. One thing they made very clear is that there is an opportunity to do something for small businesses that are impacted by COVID. There's an opportunity to even help other governmental agencies. But they made it very clear that if that, if the funding is misused, they're not going to go after that nonprofit or that other governmental entity, they would come after Burnaleo County because the money was given to us. So that's why Mei Ling was saying, we're going to look at what the processes should be, because I do recognize that there is a need, and a valid need, and we would like to get the money to the right places, and also get the, keep the county whole on any expenses that it incurs. But we need to make sure we have our processes identified, so when the inspector general comes in, we can lay out the paperwork and we have our due diligence, and they won't reject any of the, or ask back, ask for any refunds on the money that we have used.
Yeah, so obviously, we got to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's. But I will tell you, and I watched it happen with the PPP program, okay? The first round, you know, the money dried up, the second round, it's drying up, right? It's actually going pretty well, other than the first day on Monday. But we need to move with purpose and with urgency, because what will happen is, a lot of these businesses, literally right now, are on the margin. And so if we're going to help them and train them and get others to get the money, they need that now. Because if they didn't get PPP money, and to Commissioner Casada's point, they don't have customers coming in, they don't have a nest egg. I guarantee you, they got nothing sitting in the bank. They're waiting for customers to walk in. So we can't be reckless, but we do have to be quick. And we do have to, you know, if Lisa can help, obviously, on her end, having the experience around the RFP program, grant process, purchasing, let's move quick, and let's get it in, in my opinion, into those small mom and pops who, right now, are focused on, I need customers, and I need to be ready when those customers come back, and whatever this new normal will look like, to be able to run my business. So it's, there's a little pressure, at least in my mind, to do it right. But we can't have this conversation in August saying, oh yeah, now we're going to award the RFP. I'm telling you, we will watch bankruptcies galore occur in Burnaleo County if we don't do that quickly now with money in people's hands, so.
Yes, Commissioner, I agree with you. As soon as I got the information and I saw it, I immediately sent a note out to Julie and Mei Ling and saying, hey, this is something that they have not identified in the past for uses of the funding. And so let's look and see what we can do, knowing that this RFP was coming out. And like Mei Ling said, this would be separate, but I saw it as a real big opportunity, and that's why we reached out right away, so that we could move as swiftly as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Colley?
Yes. Speaking for District 3, that is entirely within the incorporated, not entirely within the incorporated area, but Commissioner Casada, I'm not sure we have any districts in the county that do not have some incorporated area in them. I think even yours is not strictly unincorporated?
Mine's probably around 75% to 80% unincorporated, and then, and then something around there, I don't know the exact numbers.
So we all share.
But mostly unincorporated, South Valley.
But we all share part of the incorporated areas. I am grateful to Mei Ling, who responded to a text message from me, I guess, last week about a business owner within District 3 on whatever that street is, just around the corner, who desperately needed some help and had met a dead end in a variety of places. You know, I, here, here the concern about the unincorporated areas, I don't think they are being short-changed in our system at all, and would not want it to be believed that District 3 and its entirety within the corporate area of the city is somehow sucking up terrible resources in volume that belong in the unincorporated areas. I think that's a big picture. I think there's a lot of questions about where tax revenue comes from and where it goes, and would be happy to participate in any of those conversations.
Any other comments before we move on and vote?
Move approval?
Okay, Commissioner O'Malley approves, is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And I would just close it out by saying, let's make sure we continue to have an open dialogue with all commissioners. I think that there's, you know, again, that money regarding who we choose to help guide us is critical, and we want to get it to those organizations that can move quickly and get funding and training and education into the hands of the small business owner quickly as well. So thank you all very much. Okay, item 9A, Behavioral Health, Senior Citizen Peer Case Management. Margarita Chavez, Margarita?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This item before you is around providing funding and support, peer support services for seniors in Burnaleo County. This is an appropriation and an item that's specific to the Behavioral Health Initiative, and this is an opportunity for us to look at a more focused target population and address the needs of our aging population here in Burnaleo County. The Behavioral Health Initiative and the Department of Behavioral Health Services have funded similar services. We have funded specifically peer case management in the amount of $620,000 a year. That is currently being provided in the community. We have two providers who are providing that service, and what we continue to hear from the community is that even with that, there's not enough case management, right? The need is extremely great for case management on a larger scale. We hear this from law enforcement, we hear this from other nonprofits, we hear this from the homeless arena, we hear this from a wide array of providers. And so what we know is that the data is telling us that our population is aging, right? This is something that we know here across the country, but here particularly in New Mexico, our population is continuing to age, and the needs are dire in this population. We know that it is very difficult for folks to access behavioral health services, and it's even more difficult for geriatric behavioral health services to be accessed. And so this is an opportunity to bring peer case management into the system specifically to the aging population. One piece that's really important to mention is that the University of New Mexico Hospital contracted with the provider SG2, and they came in as consultants and did a gap analysis and a 10-year projection. And the two areas that we really saw gaps in is the geriatric population for behavioral health and the pediatric population for behavioral health. So this is an opportunity for us to get ahead of the curve, work with these populations through peer case management versus waiting a couple of years down the road where the need is so dire that we're really being reactive versus trying to work on the front end. This item specifically is going to authorize the county manager to award and execute agreements up to $500,000 in recurring dollars. This up to amount is exactly that, right? It is up to, we will issue an RFP and work with our procurement department in order to solicit vendors who can provide this service. This may be a multi-award for different providers up to that amount. And it also authorizes the county manager to execute future amendments related to this original agreement. One point that I want to make, and just to reiterate, this, as you all know, this is part, this is a program that has gone through all of the subcommittee processes. So this was something that went to the Community Support Subcommittee, the Steering Committee, since the April ABCGC was canceled. Since the April ABCGC was canceled, there were emails sent out to all of the ABCGC members in accordance with the process. And now we're bringing it before the commission. So this is one of our pilot projects, like all of our BHI projects are. There will be robust evaluation. And we want to really collect data on this. And long, long term down the road, if we collect data and understand that this need truly is greater than we believed, that may be an opportunity then to allow the data to inform a request for additional funding if needed. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
I have some questions for Margarita. So could you talk a little bit about what a peer case manager is? What their qualifications are versus just a case manager?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner O'Malley. The difference between a general case manager and a peer case manager is specifically the lived experience that binds them to the client that they're working with. So for example, we have peer case management through our resource reentry program, right? And those peers have criminal justice history or have been involved in the criminal justice system. So that into makes them a peer because they have lived experience that they can share with the clients from which they're working with, right? So on top of the general case management skills in connecting folks to services, helping them, you know, enroll in Medicaid or do the VI SPADA, all the all the components that case management does, the peer component allows them to understand through their lived experience on a deeper level what the client is going through. So particularly for senior, the senior peer case management, we're looking at folks who are.
So so I'm sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt. Got my ring thing going on, sorry about that. The I can't shut that off. So what you're so is there a basic, like certification for a case manager? And then above that, you're saying their lived experience on top of that would qualify them to be a peer, a peer-to-peer counselor in this area?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, so at the state level, there is not a certification or a licensure for case manager at this time. However, that case manager title is accrued by experience. And so we have CEUs and things like that that we provide to our case managers. But there's not necessarily a license for a peer case manager. The peer component is based off of the lived experience.
So someone who, okay, well, we'll just talk about senior citizens like myself, who has lived to be, you know, sixty-four years old, I guess I have lived experience. So I could be a peer-to-peer counselor without having any real, like, I don't know, certifications or anything like that in mental health or therapy or anything like that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, yes. So the difference that's really important to recognize is that this is a case manager, a peer case manager. This is not a counselor or a therapist, right? It's their responsibility to be able to have assisted navigation of the system and connect folks to services. So it could be as simple as saying, I'm working with an individual and I'm going to plug them into the services at the South Valley Multipurpose Center and make sure that they get access to those services, help them enroll again in in benefits if need be. But that is not the intent for them to be a therapeutic provider other than that peer-to-peer certification. Now, one piece that I think is really important to mention is that the state of New Mexico is in the process of finalizing senior peer certification that the state will put out. That's not in place right now. Right now, the state has just peer-to-peer, generally peer-to-peer. And then they have family peer certification, but they do not have the senior caveat.
So right now, really, these are, these are people that would be navigators. In other words, someone would call this sort of center or line and say, you know, I'm I'm having difficulty or want help in some way, either through resources or access services or maybe need some counseling or whatever. And this is the person that, because they're probably the same age, are going to identify some resources for them or direct them to resources. But and so the other, so on the other end of this, just out of curiosity, are we, do we really have a lot of resources available to people in this, at this, at this age group? Or are we still trying to fill those gaps?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I think our gaps in the system as a whole continue to be to be great, right? So we know that it's still difficult to get, you know, an adult generally into see a psychiatric provider. As I mentioned earlier, it's even more difficult to get a get an appointment in for someone to see a geriatric psychiatric provider or a provider who specializes in geriatrics. So we know that the community-based gaps are are great. However, the literature does tell us that if a client is engaging with a case manager in the in the interim of the time that they're trying to get to that appointment, they're much more successful in actually making it to that appointment that could be scheduled out, you know, eight weeks in advance.
Okay, and then finally, do you, so this is a, my understanding was, when I just saw this reoccurring, you're saying it's a pilot project program. So is this a two-year pilot program? And so it's it's, I just want to make sure that that's what, if that's what we're, you know, voting for, a two-year pilot program for up to five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand. And that is that, is that the understanding that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, all of our projects through the BHI, each one of the proposals that we've brought forward, like ACES and general peer case management, youth transitional living, these are, they're all pilot projects. And when we issue an RFP, that RFP contract year has always been, with the exception of, I think, maybe two or three contracts, a two-year contract with the option to renew for two years. During that period of time, it is absolutely our requirement that we're collecting data, we're evaluating those programs. And then from there, we determine if we would want to renew that that component. So.
Okay, so this is, so this is the question I have. Are we agreeing that this is reoccurring year after year after year? Or are we agreeing that this is reoccurring for two years? In which case, you would have to come back to the commission for approval for for reoccurring?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, all of the items in the past, like this one, have been for reoccurring dollars. In the event that we have negative return or have negative evaluations, and we should feel that that's not an appropriate use of those dollars after that two-year period, that would then come back to the commission to reappropriate that those dollars to a different program.
Okay, maybe you can weigh in on this manager, Baca. I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I understand that what you're saying. After two years, does it come back to the commission for another okay to reoccur? That's what I'm asking.
So I, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner, I can take that for you, county manager, if you'd like.
Go ahead, Greg.
So, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner, so basically, it's just like the other projects that we've put through. Every one of them is built as a.
I know, Greg, I'm asking about this one. I'm asking about this particular project. And I'm asking if after two years, is it coming back to the commission for renewal? Or does just, just, just your department decide that it's, we're going to renew it and it just goes, continue to renew? That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, we can definitely put that in as the criteria for this, if that's what you'd like us to do. All of them historically go through their evaluation. If they don't meet the criteria, then we stop the funding and move on to another project. So that's what this one would do. But we can definitely change that criteria to meet the need and request that it come back before this body in two years to be renewed or not. I don't think that there's a problem or an issue with that whatsoever.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Thank you, everyone. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Okay, Julie, and then Commissioner Piscotti, Julie?
Just really quick, I just want to reassure Commissioner O'Malley. That's exactly what we'll do is so it's up to five hundred thousand dollars. It's not five hundred thousand a year. It's up to five hundred thousand dollars for a two-year period. And then we'll do, we will add that we will go in front of the commission if we intend to continue with that program. And and I think it's probably, it would be very wise to report back to you on the progress that that we're making on this particular initiative as well. So I think at some point, Margarita, if we can go ahead and put that in there and maybe we, and we back to the commission on the progress that has been made.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to make an amendment? Does Commissioner O'Malley, do we just want to add that language in? Is that something we should do now? Or how do you want to handle that, Commissioner O'Malley?
Well, I think if, since it's, if the manager feels comfortable with that and that we can move forward with that, I'm fine.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, that was good discussion. Oh, Commissioner Colley?
Thank you.
Well, I think Commissioner Piscotti was in there.
Sorry, yes, I.
Go ahead, Commissioner Colley, that's fine, I'll go next.
Sorry, Charlene.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chair. Margarita, thank you for your explanation today. And just for the commission's benefit, we've had a vigorous email conversation. We had a great telephone conversation. It was, it was very helpful in informing me about how we do these things, even though I I missed the specific language. I would wish for the specific language in this material to reflect that. But one of my questions, Margarita, is are these peer counselors paid? Are they volunteers? How does that work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Colley, they will absolutely be paid. This would be an RFP that we would issue out in an organization. I'll just use the example of the current funded peer case management provider. Let's say Centro Savila were to bid. Part of that budget is the salary line items of the case managers who would do that work.
Typically, what would you pay a case manager to do this?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it varies depending on the population that they're serving. I can only speak to kind of the hourly wages that we pay our case managers here on campus who do some similar work. And they typically make between nineteen and twenty-two dollars an hour.
Okay, so I'm not good at math, maybe, maybe the chair could help at this point. What would you envision on an annual basis, the two years that that you and Commissioner O'Malley have been talking about? How many of these case managers would we have out there? And what would we expect their load to be?
So so real quick, at nineteen dollars an hour, full-time would be about forty thousand dollars a year for a case manager at nineteen. Sorry, Margarita.
But we're just talking about one or two people.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it absolutely depends on the program itself. It's difficult for us to judge that right now. I think when you and I chatted earlier, the best perspective that we have on this is the city's intensive case management program. That is funded in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. And that actually funds eight case managers, right? Because it has their, I'm sorry, seven case managers. And it has their, kind of their administrative costs and their fringe and kind of all of those components with it. It'll vary on the program. Right now, again, with our case management program that is funded through Centro Savila for peer case management, they do have a number of case managers, but I think they're working part-time hours and doing some telephonic work. So it all depends on the program. I think that there is, just my best estimate to your question is that this will probably fund about four to five case managers.
In the two-year period?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes, Commissioner Colley. And that would be if they stay, if those four to five, five stay hired throughout the five-year period. But at any one given time, you would have four or five.
You just said throughout the five-year period?
I'm sorry, throughout the, if the five stay hired throughout the two-year period, I apologize.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
So, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Piscotti was next, and then I'd like to speak after her, please.
All right, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. First, Commissioner Colley, I'd like to say that having, myself having been a counselor case manager, we never got paid a lot. And in fact, that's, I don't think we even got twenty dollars an hour. I think I got paid like sixteen dollars an hour. And the rest of it was the overhead administrative costs. There's a lot of costs involved. But I, I want to support this wholeheartedly. Thank you, Margarita, for bringing this up. As, as a therapist, I know that that is one of our huge gaps out there. I've had clients come to me who are adult children with elderly parents. And there's no support for those elderly parents, which really puts those, my clients, the adult children, in a real bind. Because it's, it's just not available. And so I know that there is a huge need for this. I know that it, that research shows, you can look this up, that the most important thing for people's mental health for getting better when working with any sort of helping professional is the relationship that you have. So even if the peer support leaders are not, you know, clinically trained, certified, licensed, I know that they're going to go through some sort of training with empathic listening and and, you know, just knowing what the resources are, where to refer people. But just having somebody to talk to is the most important thing. And if it were up to me, I would turn back the hands of time and have this put into place a month and a half ago when people went into lockdown. And I think about the elderly people who are out there, who have nobody to talk to, nobody to connect with. And now especially, we're getting really good at using telehealth. And so having peer support at this time, using the technology, it would reach so many people and do so much good. It, I, that's how I'm seeing my clients now. And, you know, it was a little rough getting started, but they keep telling me how important it is to know that they're going to be able to talk to me every week or as they need to. So I wholeheartedly support this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, statistics show that people who have shared experiences are more successful in guiding and and working with people who have those shared experiences. So I agree. I also agree that, you know, we always want to look back at things that we've, that we've allocated money for. So my, my ask would be not only looking at this in two years, I'd like to look at everything that we've been doing in the behavioral health, you know, in two years. And and I'd like to vent every single thing, every dollar that's going out for whatever program that we've allocated those behavioral health dollars for, just so we're doing our due diligence and that we're taking it serious and we're doing everything with a fine-tooth comb, that we're not specifically just looking at one or two or three or ones that we may be on the fence with, but to look at all of them and make sure that, you know, that we're doing our due diligence with those dollars. Because those dollars are very important. And the work that we, that that everybody here has done to try to spend those smartly, including our behavioral health department, you know, and our, our steering committees. But, you know, we, we are at the end of the day responsible for those. And so for sure, I think we should look at every single thing that we do. Maybe, you know, and every, every two years seems like a fair amount of time to see if something's really working or we allocate those dollars somewhere else. So I just like to throw that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Commissioner Colley?
Yes, peace. I have, I, I've watched the conversation between Commissioner O'Malley and the county manager. And as, as I understood where you all ended up was we would be allocating two hundred and fifty thousand a year for two years. And then we get a report back. Is that, did I understand that conversation correctly?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Colley, so it could, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's two hundred and fifty thousand. It might, it could be a hundred thousand a year or thirty thousand. As long as it doesn't exceed the five hundred thousand in.
Over the two years.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colley, what Margarita is to do is, is after this awardage, she will come in front of the commission with a report on kind of how things are going. Because I think you all are interested and need to know how this program is, is going. And and if any progress has been made, you should be able to measure, do something in six months, I'm sure.
Sure, so let me, though, ask Margarita a question. The original proposal was for five hundred thousand a year, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that is correct. This agenda item is for up to five hundred thousand dollars a year in annual dollars. So if you see, it's authorized the county manager to award and execute agreements of up to five hundred thousand in annual recurring dollars. And that's, again, an up to amount.
I, I guess, if it's not too late, I would, I would. I, I guess, if it's not too late, I would, I would suggest that the commission go with the original proposal. Because I, 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 I don't think we're going to learn much by having five people out there. And I, I would, I would support the original proposal rather than the amendment, the amended proposal.
So, the, the original is the five hundred thousand? For you? Yeah, okay. Perfect, all right. Well, that's what we got. So, there's a motion by Commissioner Colley, second by Commissioner Casada, to award the items one, so nine A, behavioral health, authorize county manager award and execute agreements up to five hundred thousand in annual recurring dollars, authorize the county manager executing pre-� amendments. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I, I'm sorry, I, I got kind of cut out. What was, what was the?
That's okay. Yeah, the motion is to approve the original, the original, authorize the county manager to award and execute up to five hundred.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
Okay, so that was five hundred a year for this?
Yeah.
That was the original proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Up to, up to five hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it could be less, but it's up, no, a maximum of. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good job, Margarita. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, if you do the roll?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So-called, sir.
Awesome, thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you could repeat who motioned and seconded for me, please?
Commissioner Colley motioned, Commissioner Casada seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, we got one more. And then I will, after this, make sure I don't forget, Commissioner Piscotti will read the statements into the record of the closed-door meeting. So, we'll do that after this. Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. So, number nine, A, ten A, okay. County Sheriff, purchase of Bearcat, motion to authorize expenditure, authorized expenditures exceeding two hundred thousand county manager threshold for purchase of a Bearcat, authorize the county manager to execute amendments related to purchase of a Bearcat. Commissioner Piscotti, you pulled this off. Consent?
Yes, I did.
Please.
Yeah, one, one of the things that I read in the agenda packet is, I think, a justification for this was that it was not funded in the capital outlay process this year, that it was vetoed. And I just want to bring up that there were many items that unfortunately that the sheriff's office had vetoed. And I think that there are some that are just higher priority. And especially at this time of financial uncertainty, other things that were vetoed were the everyday deputy vehicles for BCSO. I, for me, I think that has a higher priority than a Bearcat SWAT vehicle. That would be you, I don't even know how often a SWAT vehicle is used. But, I, I'm pretty sure that deputy vehicles are used every day. And so, they have much more wear and tear. There's more necessity for the everyday vehicles. The other things that were pulled, that were vetoed from the capital outlay, which I thought, you know, were, really had a higher priority than a Bearcat SWAT vehicle, were the camera for the metro air support unit helicopter. I know that helicopter is used a lot. It's used a lot in my district for the, the mountain rescue, search and rescues. It's used in, for, for the sheriff's office to find people who are on the run. So, that camera for the helicopter, in my opinion, is much more higher priority than the Bearcat SWAT vehicle. The 3D scanner was also not funded through capital outlay. And from what I understand, that is something that the department has, but needs to be replaced for it to remain an effective tool in presenting, presenting evidence in court. So, those, those were three things that I thought had much higher priority than a Bearcat SWAT vehicle. So, yeah, I, I can't support the Bearcat at this time. I'd, I'd like to support the sheriff's office for some of those other things, but not for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see under Sheriff Covington's on. Would you like to speak to that? Is there an opportunity for us to allocate some money to some things that may be of a higher priority to Commissioner Piscotti's comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. And let me just say, we appreciate your leadership during this time. That being said, we did have some higher priorities. Like the Commissioner stated, we were able to get some grant funding for the camera, specifically the camera, the scanner. And so, we aren't asking the county for that because we secured grant funding to purchase that. The same with the, the vehicles. We obtained a grant that would purchase the vehicle. So, again, we didn't want to ask the county for that because we obtained grant money for funding of those vehicles. In reference to the flare that goes on the helicopter, we still are in the market for that flare. We have one on the helicopter and it currently works. It's a little bit outdated and needs to be replaced at some point in time. But that's the same issue that we're having with the Bearcat. The, the current one that we have is unreliable. It's, the Commissioner is exactly right. It's not a vehicle that is in use all of the time. But when we need it, it's very important and it's vital to our function. So, we did try to prioritize those things. When the capital outlay money was, you know, taken away, vetoed, we, we moved some money around within our own budget to try to find the money for the Bearcat, and we're successful in doing so. We, I, I really appreciate the, the Commissioner's support and appreciate her seeing that our priorities, you know, what they are. But we were able to make some, some moves to make sure that those priorities were taken care of outside of county funding.
Mr. Piscotti, does that give you a little more insight at this point? I mean, in terms of, it sounds like, at least under Sheriff Covington, you're, you're sticking to the fact that you need, you need the Bearcat because the other one's unreliable. And you were able to, for some of the other higher priority capital outlay, I mean, if, if we were to give you, so, let's say, hey, we said two hundred thousand for the sheriff, go buy a couple of cars. Would that help you if we said that instead of for the Bearcat? Or are you like, no, we got to have the Bearcat, man. That's got to get us into those houses. I don't know. I want to protect you, I want to make you safe.
Well, and we appreciate that. And we, we appreciate the constant support. We, we right now are, excuse me, on vehicles because of some of the grant funding that we obtained. And the, the county manager has, has, you know, given us some money for vehicles. So, I just went through vehicles and was able to decommission over fifty vehicles because we were able to purchase some new vehicles. So, as far as vehicle goes, I, I would never turn down a vehicle that was offered. But at the same time, right now, because of the current state of our fleet, which is generally good, the Bearcat is our priority.
Okay, appreciate that. Any other comments regarding the Bearcat? Okay, so, I'll make a motion at this point to approve, a motion to authorize the purchasing of the Bearcat as well as execute amendments related to the purchase of the Bearcat in the future. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Commissioner Piscotti? Okay, four to one. Compelling arguments. Madam Clerk? Roll call, please. Thank you, under Sheriff Covington.
Thank you.
Commissioner Colley? Commissioner Casada?
Yeah, before I give you my, my vote, I just want to thank Commissioner Piscotti for doing that research and, and, and making sure that it was a priority. And you made very valid points. I was happy to hear that they do have those and that those are coming. And, you know, I know that they're always working on vehicles. I, I helped him get a couple of four-by-fours this year. As the under sheriff will tell you, I went out and allocated some, some, some capital funding in the, in the legislature to get a couple for, you know, to get out into the mountain areas and up to the West Mesa. So, I think that's always something they're going to be looking for. And, and based that they do have those priorities, because I do agree with you, those priorities, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and give them the Bearcat. So, I'm gonna say yes.
All right, well, thank you for that. Okay?
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Piscotti?
I, I still have to go no. I think there's higher priorities. Yeah, I wasn't convinced.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So-counted, thank you.
Thank you, four to one. I will now ask Vice Chair Piscotti to please read the closed-door meeting statements.
Yes, I am happy to do so.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, April fourteen, twenty twenty at two PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on April fourteen, twenty twenty were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting. Do I get, have a motion? Commissioner Casada? Is there a second? Or, okay. Chair Talbert, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Call the roll, please. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Colley? Jim, you read, okay.
Got it. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So-counted, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Piscotti?
Yes, thank you. Statement two, I move that the Burnaleo County attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, April fourteen, twenty twenty at two PM within the parameters set by this commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I think it was.
Commissioner Casada seconded.
All in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
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 Okay, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Colley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So-counted, thank.
Thank you. Whoa, look at that. We're done. Second Zoom meeting in the books. So, we've got our announcement of our next commission meeting as Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty, zoning meeting at three PM, which we have a Zoom video for now, as well as May twelfth administrative meeting at five o'clock Zoom meeting. So, if anything, probably won't change before the fifteenth. So, that may be our last Zoom meeting or who knows. But, we'll virtually sign the official documents and get those signed at some point. And I will adjourn this meeting if there's no more comments. Thank you, everyone. Great job again. Meeting adjourned.[1780.82]